Okay, seven o'clock. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Hilbert.
Here.
The fever.
Yes.
Paulie.
Here.
Rodosie. Rich here.
Woodruff.
Here.
Adoption of agenda. Please wait for the chair, public meeting participation.
We have to do the adoption.
Adoption agenda, okay.
Motion by somebody.
I'll make a motion. Support.
Favor. Opposed, passed. Okay, now public participation rules. See, I was already going too fast.
Yeah.
Okay. Public meeting participation rules. Number one, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Two, begin by stating your name and address. Three, give us your comments, opinions, or questions on the issue being discussed. Four, to ensure that everyone has time to speak and that we can address other items on the agenda. We may limit an individual's speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow you one additional time period to provide new information. Five, be respectful of planning commission, applicant, and your neighbors. Again, thank you for attending, Tom Hilbert, Chair. Google minutes, November eighth.
So moved. Oh, I'll support. He had the movement, I'll take the square.
Favor. Opposed. Pass. Okay, any public comment? If that has to do with the case, we're, we'll wait. Wait till we open the case. Is that it? Just for people on, I assume on Zoom? Anybody else on Zoom? All right. A public comment. Okay, correspondence, report oh seven. Dash two zero two one by Rick Duel. And then a letter to the Alpine County Planning Commission. Is this the one I'm starting?
This is the County Planning Commission, is the letter, but with the case curves.
I don't know what the letter was, so it was just, was the letter after doing the case?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, that's what the.
Changes.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I will read, we'll handle this first. Our true concern be advised that the Charter Township of Alpine County Commission has reviewed the preliminary engineering report dated December ninth, twenty twenty one, prepared by project engineer Lawrence M. Fox, C two A E, in connection with the proposed Charter Township of Alpine Water Meter Replacement Program. Planning Commission conducted this review during its public meeting held on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty one at seven P. M. at the Charter Township of Alpine. Offices located at forty three eighty five US twenty. In following its review of the preliminary engineering report, the Charter Township, you know, Planning Commission determined that the proposed water meter replacement program is consistent with the area comprehensive development in two thousand seventeen. Charter Township of Alpine, master plan.
That was.
That's not the letter, that's the letter that if we think this application to apply for funds for the water meter replacement is legit, that's a letter that I would.
Do we need to add that to the agenda?
Yes.
Because that's not even on the agenda, it was an ad that we got this afternoon, so.
Okay.
We need to. Back up and add.
You know more about this, Norm?
I just talked to you a lot.
Oh, you did, okay, so.
It's a letter of recommendation, and what it's for is for replacing the water meters by the U. S. State. USDA that has, that's for one point two million, and this will allow us to get a very reasonable loan rate, and also because we're small, we go under the priority exemption, and that's what all this, these forms are to be filled out for. That they're applying for, and this is just a letter of support.
Okay. And I know we haven't had really a lot of time to review it, but has anybody reviewed it?
Yeah, basically, what we're doing is just a letter of support that what they're doing and what they're going for.
How do you add that to this agenda?
Well, we would need to amend the adoption of the agenda to add that as a agenda item.
Because it says there's another part with correspondence, is that a correspondence?
It would be under correspondence, but we need to amend the agenda to add it to the correspondence of the agenda.
So.
So I moved to amend the agenda to discuss.
Where do I put it? Where I change.
Adoption of agenda, you're gonna, you know, just put an amended.
Okay, so what do you want to say?
Amended to add C, letter C for correspondence. And that would be from that city of Alpine, I guess I didn't look at it.
City of Alpine.
Wrong meeting. Who was that from, Tom, that letter?
Well, this is from me to, to the township board of justices. This letter.
Yes.
And but you have, I mean, but the board has to, I guess, approve me to, approve me to sign this letter. If we are in support of this, correct, Norm?
Yeah.
Am I reading that right?
Yeah, it's just a support for filing the application.
Yeah.
I gotta have, okay, so we're amending the agenda, so amended to add what?
To add Tom Hilbert's letter to
Recommendation.
Letter of recommendation for approval.
For water meter replacement program.
Water meter approval?
Water meter replacement program.
Replacement program.
Wow.
From the USDA.
Yeah. And.
I'll just put water replacement program. To Alpine Board.
To board justices.
Okay, so I made the motion to amend.
I'll support.
Norm supports.
Favor.
Hi.
Post, okay. Okay, well, in the discussion about that item, is that that basically all you?
Yes, it's like the planning commission is recommending that the board, except we're just saying that we we feel good about this, and yes.
Which is part of moving forward.
We support, yes. My commission is just supporting to file the application to move forward with it.
Any questions?
It's seconded by the board.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to.
So do we make a?
We have to vote on the amendment first.
Okay, so.
We did warn him.
Okay.
Okay, now we have to vote on whether we're going to approve this, whether you're going to approve you sign this law.
And the letter is our support, saying move forward with the loan program.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion.
All right. I'll support.
What are we supporting again? I mean, we just.
We're applying for a loan.
Okay, okay, so I, okay, first off, we adopted the agenda, now we've changed it to add to amend to add your letter, I mean, just making it short, and that was passed.
Correct.
Now what do we do?
Now we're discussing.
Discussing whether I should sign this letter.
Okay.
I guess, I mean, I don't know why we would, why I wouldn't tomorrow sign it, but.
I guess I assume that you are signing it, that's why we're sending it out, so it doesn't mean nothing.
Because Norm has, Norm has studied, Norm has studied it long and hard, and it's.
Yeah, about thirty seconds from skipping.
Well, he told me that much, it's, it's a really favorable interest rate, and.
Yes.
So, yeah, you can move forward and say, and we don't, do we not, we don't need a motion to say you could just sign it?
No, I don't, I don't feel like you would, because it's like we've already made the motion that we agree that this should go on to the board, but we have to sign it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then do we, do we normally, when we open the case, does that when we?
Well, the next thing I'm here is after correspondence is Blake made a motion to file all correspondence supported by a motion.
Okay, and then that'll include the one by Rick Duel.
Well, it's under correspondence, so, yeah.
Okay.
So we have to discuss.
And I, I just put number C in there, so.
So we're good.
We have to make the motion.
We have to make the motion to accept Rick Duel's letter.
So moved.
Well, it's not just this letter, it's all correspondence.
Oh, it's, okay. All right.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, I'll favor. I oppose, all right. Now we're too public here.
Nope, we've got the letter from the planning commission.
Where is that?
We just approved the change in the ordinance.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so this is part of the correspondence.
Yes.
Okay, dear Commissioner Hilbert, the Pinaconey Plan Commission Amendment regular session and reviewed the proposed Charter Township of Alpine, and it's only going to admit amendment number one forty eight regarding section three twenty five parking and circulation after reviewing discussion motion by Fred Wake Meyer, approved supported by T. J. who sat to support the Charter Township of Alpine Plan Commission recommendation to adopt ordinance number one forty eight as as presented. All, all eyes, ace. Ace, all, the County Plan Commission greatly appreciates the opportunity to review the proposed amendment sincerely, Tammy Thompson, of Pinaconey, planning commission chair. Okay.
Yeah, there was a lot of positive conversation, discussion about it. Oh, it was unanimous that it was good, the flexibility was discussed.
Okay, now.
Yep, public hearing.
Okay, public hearing, case number P dash zero seven dash two one, Gary Sprague requests a special use, a special approval used to allow a tiny home has the principal dwelling on a parcel. Property is located at eleven oh six Hanover Road, parcel number zero one three zero nine nine zero 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 five dash zero zero is in a waterfront residential W. R. Zone District. And you are Gary, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
A motion has to be made to open the.
Okay, motion, I'll make a motion. Larry and Chuck supported. All in favor. Opposed, okay, all right, Gary.
I, I can go ahead.
You can go ahead.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You have any, anything you want to?
Well, well, I, I guess a couple of questions, very briefly. I think I now probably need to go ahead and file something with the drain commissioner. Is there a form that has to be filed with the drain commission to get that started?
Kevin, you. If, that's after, if we approve it, Gary.
Okay. So was everything clear in the documents I sent?
What about the fence?
The fence, the fence is, if it's six foot, then you, it's non-conforming, you have to get a special reuse permit, but you're allowed to put four foot.
Okay, and I, I didn't understand that my daughter has a property down Hanover, and that was put in maybe six, seven years ago, and it's a taller fence. I didn't understand the limits and four foot, that's fine at this point.
Okay.
That, not a question on that, I just, I was suggested that I throw the fence in, and I didn't understand the, the current zoning requirements, so not a problem.
So you agree to put up a four foot fence rather than a six foot fence?
Take that back and forth for, yes.
Any, Kevin, you have anything?
No, I hope that Gary's plans are really nice places to be installed.
And I looked at it, you have, well, we can go through that, we will go through that too, but he's got a septic there, he's got power, well, yeah, so it's not likely.
What's that?
I said, I looked, I would look at your site, and you have a well and septic and electric there, and.
Yeah, yes, all.
Some small houses, they, they are self-contained, they don't even have wells and septic.
Oh, yeah, this is, yeah, this is a, just pretty much structurally built like a, like a home, and they'll bring it in, and crane set it onto a foundation, but I have underground already, the electrical conduits, the sewer line, the water has already been run, and it's, it's pretty well set for.
Yeah.
Putting the foundation, yep. There is an agent of Dickinson Homes in Roger City who will then take over the lead of, of doing everything per code, he's a builder, and will put the, the footings, foundation, and everything into code, and he will be the one responsible to finish up the little details on the, the home when it's delivered.
Okay. And then we'll review the report by Rick Duel. Okay, findings and facts.
Close the public hearing.
You'll close the public hearing, okay. Motion. I'll make them all very. Or Chuck supports, all in favor of closing. Okay, now.
Read section six oh two, section three twenty two, and section three twenty, as the commission reviewed each standard chairperson noted. It would just be the we just checked the box.
Yes, yes. Findings affect parcel located waterfront residential townhome, tiny homes are permitted with special use permit, it's the reason we're here a lot with. Parcel compliance minimum month with size standards, building height, it's one story, lot coverage complies, not to exceed thirty five percent setback, complies with standard front side and waterfront setbacks, setback forty feet, setback from lake twenty six, setback from east property exceed setback requirements from Hanover Road and exceed setback requirements from west property line, minimum area required standard is nine hundred and sixty, and that's why we're here, because this one is only nine hundred and twenty. Especially use permit is required for the structure that meets the standards of tiny homes. Principal dwelling from two hundred and fifty square feet to nine hundred and fifty nine square feet. Section seven forty, tiny, tiny homes shall be allowed as principal dwellings on the parcel that's freestanding, so accessory dwelling units in your plan. You develop a tiny home, show conform to current building code. Section six oh two, special use. Approval. Standards. Okay, now we will go through the, see if it's, see if it satisfies decent uses. Location, size, and use of nature, and the nature intensity of operations shall not be not, shall not be such that to disrupt orderly property development as a part in conflict with or the spirit of principle permitting uses of adjacent or neighboring lands, and buildings no potential issues identified. That's standard, correct?
Yes, yes.
New special use. Special land use shall not be more objectionable to me by reason of traffic noise, vibration, dust, smoke, or flashing lights, or disposal of waste. Then the operation of any principal committee. No potential issue, issues identified. The standard has been met, the use shall not be increased hazardous, hazards from fire are the dangers to be raised adjacent properties, no potential issues identified, the standard has been met, or the principal, the planning commission may consider the potential impact on property values of nearby properties when determining the impact of post special land use on adjacent properties. We don't see any, no potential issues there, the standard has been met, trap, traffic and access, the you shall not increase traffic hazards or cause congestion to the public highways or streets of the area adequate access to use shall be furnished by either existing road unit or proposed roads, and no potential issues identified, the standard has been met, public services and water and supply and sewer disposal system shall be adequate for the proposed use, African shall be will provide onsite water supply and sewage disposal according to and I assume you did everything through the health department, correct, Gary?
Yes, the septic system, drain field, health department, and, of course, electrical was all through the electrical permits, and, and, yeah, everything's up, up. It's all permitted and authorized and approved.
Okay, thank you, the use will be adequately served by essential public services and and facilities or the person responsible for establishment of a proposed use will adequately provide any such service, so the applicant will services, and so okay, that's use will not create excessive additional public cost and will not be detriment to the economic welfare of the township, no potential issues, and that natural resources, the tiny home will not create substantial negative impact on the natural resources of the township or natural environment as a whole, knowing, according to section, the landscape shall be preserved in its natural state as far as practical, by minimizing treatment, soil removal, and any grade or slope changes shall be kept, be in keeping with the general preferences of neighborhood. Standard has been met, generally, the use will not impair the purpose and intent of this ordinance, no potential issues identified. The standard has been met, okay. Section three twenty two waterfront green belts, the green belts shall be established and maintained on all property located within twenty five feet of the ordinary high water mark of the lake or stream, the residents will be located forty feet from the water. So this has been met, the standard has been met, like Trump property, it's strongly recommended that at least seventy percent of the water with at the water mine should be kept in natural vegetation, either shrubs, tree shubs, herbaceous plants, or on more grass, this vegetable strip shall be twenty five feet deep from the water's edge.
It's a recommendation, so.
Yeah. Summary finding based on the analysis of the information provided by the timing. Or in standards. Any Don, are you participating or just listening and learning?
Yeah, I'm, I'm listening and learning. If you have any questions that Kevin can't handle, I'm happy to join us.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that Elon sees what's happening, a, a trend that he wants to prevent.
Any members have any questions for Gary or comments to make, or?
No, it looks really cool, Gary, congratulations. I'm getting that going.
Thank, thank you.
No, yeah, it's you really cleaned the area up nicely and kind of fitted in there where it fits best, so.
Well, yeah, a lot of thought I tried to put into it as planning as I cleaned the property up, but I was, was gonna build a stick built, and then I ran into these folks, they've been building custom modular units since fifty two, I believe. And they're built in the old Ford, Henry Ford Woody plant up in Iron Mountain.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Pretty impressed with the quality and how they put things together, so I thought it, it really made my life simple at my age, so.
I think they're decent homes, yeah.
Yeah.
I've known, I've known people that have had those homes, they really are well put together.
Yep.
Okay, so our options, motion to prove the special land use for construction of tiny home located eleven oh six Hanover Road. Motion to approve with second option be motion to approve land use for construction of tiny home located eleven oh six Hanover Road with the following conditions, or three is to deny the special land use.
I'll make a motion to approve, number one.
I'll support.
Okay, and we don't, Kevin, you, there's no special conditions to write in there, you're, we're good, okay.
So, but I'm wondering, it says a motion was made, is this the first motion on this paper?
Yeah.
And who submitted that?
Norm.
The dot and Google is fine to the applicable zoning order standard in his report. That's not the same as.
So there was, it says example, not motion number one on the top of your page.
Yeah.
And that's the one.
So I, I think what I'm doing, okay, so on this paper, this is the, this is.
Oh.
It says that a motion was made by you and supported by Paulie to adopt and approve Rick's findings of the applicable zoning standards in his report, so we went through the findings, and there's that. And then there's, I think, after that. Well, I think so, because then we, we, as a, as a group, are.
Oh, okay.
So then this goes, these findings go in with the case.
Yeah, so are you still good with your motion for that?
I'm good with both of them.
So then I do a roll call, Gary.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
The fever.
Yes.
Paulie.
Yes.
Rodosie, Rich, yes, Woodruff.
Yes.
So then, the next is a motion was made by Blake, it's supported by Blake to grant deny or table the special use application for the case with the following conditions, which I don't think we had any conditions, so we're just granting it all, right, so we just grant, so that's another motion.
And that, me and Norm are taking, again.
Same, too.
At least I was.
We're just an approving duet.
We're a good team, Norm.
So roll call, Gary.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
The fever.
Yes.
Paulie.
Yes.
Rodosie, Rich, yes.
Yes.
That's it. The only other thing I noticed that he got into that fence thing, but I guess we don't have to do that since you were taking that off the table, I'm gonna do a four foot fence.
Four foot.
Right?
There was no conditions, so, yeah.
Yeah. Because otherwise, if you did the six foot fence, we'd have to make a decision on whether we would grant that or not.
Right.
So.
Kept it easy.
Yeah, so we're clear on that, you're gonna do a four foot fence, not a six foot. I'll get that in a minute, so, all right, thank you. Say that again?
Could he do a six foot fence?
What? No. I mean, if he asked for it, we couldn't talk about it, you know, but it's. Yes, because that, that's a separate issue.
Yeah, and he just has to make application.
Yes, because it, it would come in as a form of a special use permit to do the six foot and set four foot with the reasoning, however. But the best thing would be to get the guy to clean his flight up.
Well, ask the consultant in the Easy Chair. Well, ask the consultant in the Easy Chair.
I don't know if he's asleep or not.
Never, never asleep, always watching. No, if he didn't ask for that though, so you're right, so he would file a new application if he wanted to have a six foot fence, so. That's, we're not really discussing that, he said he's gonna take it down to four foot and we're done.
There is a setback from the, the lake, I believe, right, there's no fence and then, then the, then the.
Twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet. And then is the fence line right on the lot lines or is it?
Yes, well, I, I wouldn't put a fence on the lot, I'd put, you know, I have six inches or whatever. Recommended back inside the property, but that's just something that's the future, I gotta get the house built first. And then with that, but I probably shouldn't even include it, I was sitting there doing grinds and I thought, you know, try to think of the future, but.
If you don't, if you don't do the fence, that's not gonna be a problem for us either, Gary.
Yep, okay, okay, so I'm all set, I can keep moving ahead?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I can.
And I have the, you'll have to, eventually you have to sign these, but whenever you're in the area or whatever, I don't know if Lynn's gonna send them to you or what.
Yeah, I don't, I don't come back typically to the end of April, I don't have a place to live up there, that's why I wanna build something. And my plan is, is if I can get the, the estimates back now from the company. And get in line, I'm hoping to have the thing delivered late May is my goal. So I can, can have a place to.
Good luck.
Live for this, I'm hoping. I'm hoping the numbers don't go crazy and I'm hoping they can meet, meet that schedule, so I appreciate you addressing this, I appreciate. Your confidence and, and allowing me to do this and, and it will be a place that'll be. Well built.
Yes, it should look very nice, thank you.
I'll work with the rest of the, the staff there at the township and, and get her in place, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Good night.
Thanks, Gary.
Good night.
Okay. Denise, I guess, right, we're moving on to.
Yep, the workshop.
We're moving on to the workshop. Denise, sorry, I. I forwarded this on to the board members a week ago and I didn't, don't think I received any comments back from anybody.
The only thing I just want, the only things I was questioning, I figured we could bring up today, so.
Okay.
So, just so, you know, to kind of recap, you've seen all of this before, this was, is in, in terms of you were, you were forwarded to documents, so I'm talking about the. The amending ordinance for your zoning ordinance first, so. It, this is all the same stuff that was in that draft that I initially gave you that you'd been kind of looking through, this is just. Kind of the same thing cleaned up and put in an amending ordinance format, so. I think, you know, Nathan asked to kind of push this issue forward, so, you know, rather than have a bunch more workshops. He thought, you know, be good if we kind of did a final review, of course, remember you still. You still have to hold a public hearing, you know, you're not really approving anything, you're just saying, okay, this looks the way we want it to look, we can make whatever changes. You want tonight, and then if you're ready, then you can go ahead and schedule that public hearing for your next meeting.
At least what we have printed here says the city of Alpine, so I don't think we.
So the other, no, the other document is the city's licensing ordinance, so, yep, you're. So your attorney had been looking at the city, I talked to Rachel about this too, and. It makes a whole lot of sense for you to start there in term, because they've got that process already. Outlined and, and your attorney took a look at theirs, that Rachel and I had been working on that, and. He likes that format, now he's done some other, he's done some other licensing ordinance, but this one, I think, has been gone, it's gone through a few. Revisions, which I think is really good, because, you know, i- in its initial form. You know, it was a certain way in its initial form and then really actually was put into practice and then. There were revisions put in based on actual experience with it. And so then the third revision of it is what you're actually looking at, which is to add the adult use. Marijuana facility or establishments into that, so the reason we sent that one rather than. Preparing one for the township is your attorney's actually doing that, but he, they, Nathan and your attorney both wanted you to see. The cities to just kind of give you something to respond to. This isn't exactly what you would have, because, and, and the differences is, are that some of the standards that are in the city's licensing ordinance. I actually am addressing those same type of standards in your zoning, now the city's isn't addressed in their zoning, it's addressed in their licensing. Either way, you know, doesn't matter which way you do it. Some of them just seemed more zoning related to me, so you wouldn't have this exact same ordinance, but we at least wanted you to see. It, you know, and, and respond, if there's some things in that licensing ordinance. That you would like to see changed now, you know, now's the time, because. The goal is to have both of these documents, once the licensing ordinance is prepared, you know, in, for the township. To have both of these documents, you know, hit the township board at the same night. Because, you know, you don't want one in effect without the other.
Okay.
Yep, so, but I wanna start, you know, with the amending ordinance, then we can talk about the licensing. So that the amending ordinance is the one that, you know, says ordinance to amend, territory township Alpine's zoning ordinance, so it's, I don't know, nine pages long. So, I don't know, you, I mean, we've been through a lot of it already, do you wanna just jump to areas that you have questions or changes you want in? Or do you wanna talk about the whole thing again?
I have a couple of questions. Go ahead, let's. It can, on the micro business, can we rule out that they cannot do outdoor growing, or is that something the state has to do?
Oh, you, you can decide that. Yep, you can, you can say that. I think the city says that, that they can't do outdoor growing, I think theirs says that, so, yeah, you can, so at the, at the, the meeting. I haven't been to so many marijuana meetings, I'm trying to remember which one, I think it was, oh, I think it was the city's meeting where. You know, we, we asked that question about whether, or maybe it was that yours, I don't know, but we asked the question, you know, do you see much outdoor growing and. In this area, the answer was no anyways, that it's really indoor that's happening, but you can say no to that and we could write that in that way. What does everybody think about that?
If we don't have it, can we put that in there and do we wanna put that in there? We don't want any outdoor, or door grow. Hello, we don't want any outdoor growing, because as I read, this was a great article, if anybody's seen this, have you seen this? Denise, MTA's magazine. And this month's issue, it's cover story marijuana in Michigan.
No, I haven't seen that.
Okay. Very good article. And I'd like to get copies of it, give it to our, our board members. But I. They were saying in there, if you get a bunch of plants growing outdoors, there will be an odor. So if we can keep that odor to an extreme minimum, we're gonna have one less complaint. And I don't think, probably, micro business probably wouldn't wanna grow outdoors here, but let's make sure they don't. Any thought from?
Well, are you saying for micro only or?
Yes. I would say even the growers.
Even the growers, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would.
Hey, Norm, I'll tell you, doing, you know, I work out in all the townships too, and so. When you're talking about licensing these businesses, you know, I think that's a great idea, because they could have a higher concentration of the odors you're talking about. I mean, I see people growing, you know, you, anybody can grow marijuana now for their own use, recreational, twelve plants, whatever it is. But I've seen all the townships, I don't honestly know whether they're legal grows or not, but. People just put a bunch of eight foot four by four posts in, and then they take that black fabric, so you can't see through it.
Yeah.
And as I've been driving around early summer, I, you know, I kind of think to myself, I wonder what they're growing in there, well, then pretty soon, come, come August. You can see exactly what they're growing in there.
Do you see it, do you smell an odor?
Oh, and you can smell them, I have. Outdoor is good. Yeah, it smells like a skunk, you know?
Oh, see, that would be tough on the neighbors, if all of a sudden.
It is.
Set up and you had it outdoor, that, that would change.
But can, but we can't do anything about the, the resident that wants to grow a few plants in his yard?
No.
No, but that's, like, several dozen plants, there's a big difference in amount of odor, indoors you can control it with ventilation and I've, I've even seen people put up dryer. You know, like you throw in what your clothes in the dryer, I've seen those hanging around to help mask the odor somewhat. So that, you know, again, like Denise said, that's. You, it's, but I. Recommend that, you know, that's a good.
Yeah, I can't think of any other plant that you grow legally that smells, right, because otherwise you're being. You know, if there's some other plant that smells a lot, that's being grown lots of acreage of that, that being, I don't know of any.
We expel cherry blossoms, but.
Have you ever walked by lavender field? So does marijuana, if you like that smell. It's personal, yeah.
I'm just talking outside the box, because it's like if we say, well, that stinks, don't know, but cherry blossoms are nice, so, yeah.
But I, I don't think it's gonna hurt, kind of to Denise's point and Norm's point, um, I, I think it's a good idea to say that they can't just be randomly grown outside, because. We're talking a giant number of, and we're not here to be the police, we're here to just set a standard on what the legal aspect of it is. So, if, I don't think it's a bad idea, but to Denise's point, it's not gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be an issue. Much, if at all, because we, we don't have a climate that's conducive year round to growing anything outside, so. And these legitimate, the licensing and just to get the approval through the state of Michigan. The, the protocols and the quality control, I think, forces them inside anyway.
They get quality control with bugs and everything.
Yeah, so I think that it's fine to put it, I, I'm not opposed to adding it to it, but. I don't think it's ever gonna come up as an issue to get a, a, a different kind of special use permit or whatever to grow outside for any of these legitimate businesses.
Don't allow them to get their foot in the door.
Right.
So, we would only eliminate it acreage wise or honey, with the language be. Just no outdoor, because you can grow some outdoor, just.
Well, and that's kind of, that kind of brought up my question of, it, it just says that. Marijuana plants must be surrounded by an approved opaque fence at at least eight feet in height. And to Don's point, there's the guy right there by the corner depot that's just got the eight foot. Black tarps wrapped around his yard. Um. Now, he's not legitimate, and any, probably any of these businesses that we would be responding to, but do we. Eliminate that and add indoor? No, because we have an outdoor growing.
I'm wondering if we talk about the size, like, that we can say no outdoor growing greater than. And whatever that would be, greater than an acre or half an acre, quarter acre.
He's got a stain, there's no.
Well, he might be illegal, but I, you know, that's different.
That's in the city.
Or do we just, because if you. I mean, are we saying, if we say in our ordinance, you can't have outdoor growing at all? Does that eliminate the person that wants to do a few plants?
No, because we're talking specifically about commercial facilities.
For sure, okay, so I say you just don't allow them, that's, that's what I would say.
So you would omit that line six then, Denise?
Yep, I would, well, I would say something about the fact that it's prohibited.
Yeah, that's.
Yep, right on that six, I'd get rid of those standards and change that sentence.
It's on page eight of ten.
What were you gonna say? Yeah, so it's the same day, yeah.
Okay, so we would just take six open?
No, she's gonna leave it, she's just gonna state that it's outdoor growing is prohibited, yeah. Point, Norm.
On page three of that document. In the area there, it says marijuana grower class A, B, and C. What are these classes, or is that something the state?
What is? That, that's from the state, so it's actually defined out, if, if you look in the actual example of the licensing ordinance from the city. You can actually see it, it's on page five, those classes are spelled out, now they're different. If it's medical versus adult use, it's a different number of plants. So, but if you look at that table on page five of the city's licensing ordinance, it tells you. Um, you know, like a maximum of one hundred, now the, when it says MRTMA, that's the adult use, I believe, and then the MM. FLA is the medical, so you see how they're different, class A is different depending on if it's medical or adult use and then.
It's not that clearly stated, but go back to that page and I'll just explain it.
That's right, okay, so we don't have that in ours.
Well, it would be in your license, so. Right, right, so, you know, we say in here class A, B, or C. That's allowable, that's an allowable use in those districts. And then over in the licensing ordinance, this is where the number permitted comes in. Now, in the cities, you'll see it, it's unlimited, and you all indicated that you wanted unlimited also. So, if somebody comes in, you know, with a class A license. For either, usually it's gonna be both for medical and adult use, more often adult use than medical, you know, then you're, you're unlimited. And then there's later on, and, and I know we're not getting into that licensing ordinance yet, but it talks about stacking of licenses in terms of. In one facility and, you know, stacking those grower licenses up, which the state of Michigan allows, so. That's what those, but in zoning, you're really just looking at the land use itself.
Okay.
Um. Yeah.
The other thing I, I noticed in this article that there's ten different licenses. Retailers, safety facilities, the five major licenses include growers, processors, secure transporters, retailers. And safety compliance facilities, another five special licenses are available for excess growers. Designated consumption establishments, a marijuana event organizer, or a temporary marijuana event.
Yep, and that's, so that's something that I was gonna bring up. Actually, when we went through the licensing ordinance, is that, and we talked about this when we had the. The last meeting, this was at the city where the planning commission, the state council got together, talked about those. Prohibiting those designated consumption centers, marijuana event organizers and temporary event licenses, though those are listed as prohibited. In the copy you're looking at, excess growers are also still listed as prohibited, but there was a discussion at that meeting, because. Nobody really understood what an excess grower meant. Um, and so we had, I actually have it, I, I looked it up, I, I, I looked it up then, I looked it up again just now, so you can know what that means, so. Basically, this is in layman's terms, it says. That an excess marijuana grower license permits a business that is, has reached the cap, okay, for it, so that for the adult use, they've already reached their growing cap. So they wanna expand recreational cultivation. And so if they can get additional medical grower licenses. That they can basically allot that over to adult use, so it's kind of just a transfer of. Where, you know, what they're growing their plants under, so this is how it summarized, this license allows a business to designate some of its. Of its allocated medical plant allotment over to the recreational market. So that's what an excess grower means. So, and I don't know how the city eventually fell on that one. I, I, I don't know. Whether they decided at the meeting, that wasn't something that I don't think they had decided whether that, that, I know that the consultant, one of the, one of the lawyers that was there. Said it doesn't make any sense to prohibit that because you're basically, it's, it's the ones that are really experienced that you want in your communities. And those are the ones that are getting the excess grower licenses. So you really shouldn't be prohibiting that. So. You know, so, so I know that's a long explanation, but, but basically they're saying allow, you should allow excess growers. But those other things, the designated consumption centers, event organizers, and the temporary event licenses. Those are pretty common to prohibit, that there's almost none of those in Michigan anyways.
Is there any way we can say, the way the state's going, seems like they come up with some new, some new dreams all the time, for new regulations. That we can say that if there's additional license or whatever it be, da 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 da, that the state has to prove or something like that.
That what, that, that, I mean, you can say that there, the, any, any new type of, okay, so I guess here's how we would phrase this. That there's, if there's any new type of marijuana license that becomes permissible or permissible by the state. But that's still not permissible in your ordinance unless you amend your ordinance to include it. Yep, we can do that.
I have one other thing for Harp Port in the.
Norm, while you're talking about that, though, that's just what Denise described, you know, I feel what you probably want to do because. You gotta remember at the state level, these lawyers, like the ones that were talking at the city council and planning commission joint meeting, they're lobbyists. I mean, they're, they're all for the industry, they're all for what's best for the industry. So any new thing the state comes up with. You, you make it to where you have to revisit it, decide whether that, whether it does or doesn't fit in your ordinance is the safest way to approach it, in my opinion.
The thing I have, my question, so in the office section, what do we call it, office? OS, office.
Office service?
Office services, we're authorizing, we're saying we can put. Marijuana in those districts. Can we maybe give that some consideration in an office, kind of like? A special office building, I mean, Donald, do we, I didn't even look, but do we approve liquor stores and?
I don't know if we have anything to say about where liquor goes, that's controlled by the state. All we have is a little land, like a commercial piece of land.
So wouldn't the property owner have to get their building a permit? From us in order to lease that property?
One, one thing is this, it goes like this, too. It's also a special use, no matter what. So in an office service, it's normally like dental, accounting. It's usually like an eight to five kind of thing. That's the other thing. Can you regulate time of opening of stores?
It's in there. Eight AM to nine CM.
Okay, so like.
Oh, there's a whole list of things that can.
Right, we'll read them off because that's what he's trying to say. Would that fit in to an office service?
Yeah, that seems to me as kind of like a clean.
Agricultural animal forest products, special, special use, special fitness, special use. Marina, special use, museum, special use, private park, special use, permitted or business incubator food. Data processing, financial institution, funeral homes. Interior designs, showrooms, medical sales, equipment sales, medical laboratories. Office developments, personal service, beauty shop, tailoring, massage, photo finishing. Photographers, professional offices. Small cell wireless. Then there's special, you know, like antennas and masks and. Wireless communications, support cell towers, okay, special trade contractors, offices and showrooms. Colleges, universities. Or if you're in colleges, universities, then you need a pot, pot establishment. Assisted living or special use, childcare is permitted. Childcare institutions are. I mean, so I don't know.
If you look at that, that's a huge kind of thing. I mean, if, if you've been past the one that they just sell it, like this is just for selling it, like, like a store. The, the one that, if you think about the things that I've seen, when you go by, unless you grab what it is, it just looks like an office. A lot of them are taking over old banks, drive-throughs. Did you ever notice that one in, is it Ascoda? It was a chemical bank and it's a drive-through now. They use the drive-through and everything. It's really nice. So that's like an office look.
The one in Chaboygan is, the, the one in Ascoda is, oh no, it's Calus, it was a PNC, but you can't do drive-through. So they're, they're buying those bank buildings just for the vault. But again, with the office space, we're already zoning the office, so wouldn't the owner of the building have to get the special use permit in order to lease that space? Yeah, so I mean, if we have it in the office, we have it available, then it's there, but it's on the onus of the business owner, of the building owner. To allow it. And if they, you know.
You, you only have, actually, there's a very small area of office service. On the township, it's only, there's two areas. One is north of, let's see, I guess that's Hamilton Road. It's on the west side of twenty-three and it goes up. Now it is surrounded in the back by R three. So it's all residential in the back, but I'll say on the opposite side of the road is B two. And behind that is also residential and it is allowed in, or would be allowed in B two. The only other office lot I can see. Is on the corner of Long Rapids Road and Bagley Street, across the street from that gas station. So those are the only, it's, it's a very small district.
So I don't know if it, I, I personally wouldn't care one way or the other, but I don't see how it's a whole lot different than some of the other things that are being offered at that district. And it also has a special use on it, so.
Business that could put it there, but then you couldn't have it cross the street. I don't know. Cause I don't. I can, either way, it doesn't matter to me, but.
I think it just puts the responsibility of it on the building owner more than anything, but.
Well, we'd have to decide if they came in and asked if they could do that, how the, it would impact the area near it. That would be what we would, would it impact, would selling marijuana products impact whatever's around the office service?
Well, that one office service on the corner of Long Rapids Road and. That's all surrounded by residential. That's was a, a big thing we had to, when we worked on changing that zoning. Was to come to office services, because who was gonna build the house there?
Well, here's the other thing, since there's only two office services, we don't offer it.
There you go, I like that.
I mean, if there's only two anyway. And it looks like the one that is possible is a little tricky because of all the.
Well, it's gonna have its own rules.
You know, I mean, then we're eliminating the other one, which is, I don't know what you said it was.
It's probably the Knights Columbus, or the old Knights Columbus.
Oh, Knights of Columbus? Yeah, the chances of that are.
Take off office service.
Yeah, because it's only two anyway.
Yeah, well, the one on the north side is about, it's about twenty, twenty parcels, but they're, they're small, they're very small parcels also.
I mean, they could come in and, I, I, if you're uncomfortable with that, I don't really care when we're together on it. So that's how I feel, but. There's not that much office service to begin with, so I don't think it would affect somebody trying to come in and.
Then, I'm just thinking that one corner, we went through the gyrations of change in it, and now somebody could, that'd be probably a nice place to put a pot place.
Wonderful place to.
Yeah, but what residents around there would be, they'd be in here filling this room. No, they weren't. So I think we try and keep that clean.
You wanna keep it clean, just not.
I, I can't have an opinion on it. I own that property. My husband owns it, yes. So I don't have an opinion. No, no, I don't have an opinion on it.
If you want to leave it off, we can always, I mean, if it, we really think it's a problem, rewrite it.
We can, yeah, I'd say take it off.
There's enough retail space around, they normally move into other existing buildings. I haven't seen a lot of new construction.
I've never seen a new construction.
And then, isn't the, isn't the two that are in the city? Are they both gonna be?
One of them was supposed to be new.
One was supposed to be, and I think that one, I don't know if that's.
One was supposed to be the old big boy, wasn't it?
That'd be a good place to, you could grow downstairs and sell upstairs. You got water and everything, right? River water.
You know, that, that big boy. The, the big boy, they kind of took off the table. I think that lease is gonna expire and Loom was actually gonna build a new facility across from. Cracker Barrel, but that, that one's kind of on hold. You all don't know it yet, but you remember when they made the B cube? That went out by Myers, that drive-up coffee shop? Well, they're now gonna build Loom cannabis buildings. They've got orders for about forty of them to go all over Michigan. So I think Loom is kind of waiting until to see if the city passes the recreational and do everything all at once. So you'll see something happen in the spring. We're reviewing the plans for these new marijuana facilities as we speak.
They're not drive-up though, are they, Don?
No, the city's gonna prohibit outdoor sales, which I think drive-up would fit into. It's more or less, you know, out of sight, out of mind. You go inside, nobody knows what you're doing. You come out and you get in your car and you leave kind of. Scenario.
Wouldn't, I mean, it's not a dumb business plan.
I, I, I don't know if we need a motion or what.
Oh, we didn't do it for anything else.
Yeah, we haven't approved this.
So we'll just take office service off.
Take office service off, Denise.
Okay, well, I'm curious, we, we brought up drive-through, how do you feel about that? No drive-through. So, but is curbside pickup okay?
Yeah, be silly not to.
Alright, that's, that's the way I wrote it, so.
Do, do a lot of places have drive-through?
I, I don't think it's legal.
Or you don't know, okay. It's not legal?
It's not legal because you technically can't drive with it. That was the botanical company in Ascoda. I, we're researching about stuff at work, so I have a little bit of knowledge on this. The botanical company in, I'm sorry, Towas was the old PNC and the state required them, and I believe. The municipality, so this, it must be the city there, they, no, it's Asco County, they require that they concrete in the drive-through. The tubes are all filled with concrete. Because you cannot drive with it. You cannot drive while consuming it. So they, and, but if you get it. You have the opportunity to consume it. So the state required that they concrete in their drive-through. It's why there's not a lot of, in Michigan, I don't know if there are any, but there's drive-through liquor stores, yeah. But that is a whole nother conversation that.
That's funny.
But yeah, they made them concreted in so that they didn't have the ability to use the tubes to shoot your pot out. It's a smart idea. Look, you know how much Biggie's doing because you don't have to get out of your car to go in and get it? I mean, it's not, it's again, it's Michigan just kind of holding it back for now and trying to justify moving slow on everything.
Okay, I guess not.
Is there anything else in the amending ordinance for the zoning that you want to talk about?
I'm reading that, those are great.
Yeah, those are good points. I didn't even think about them. How long until the licensing part would be done then Denise? We just, we would have to say roll with these changes that were recommended?
Yep, so the, the licensing isn't gonna take that long because if, if they're, well, let's go through it. But if you recommend that you want to use this one, it's, it's really just some tweaking to get it to fit the township. It's actually pretty beneficial for applicants because they've got the same process then, no matter where they want to open a facility instead of learning a whole new process. So it really does make sense. So the goal would be, let's see, does the, the township has to do two readings also? Don't, don't they with an ordinance, I believe, the charter township, I think. I think so. This, yeah, so we'll just have to time it out. What I would do is, you know, schedule your public hearing. You don't, you don't do a public hearing for the licensing, because that's not your thing. You, you can review it and give some recommendations, but that hasn't, you don't do anything with that one. So schedule your public hearing for your meeting in January and I'll get all the notices and stuff. I'm gonna be on vacation for a couple of weeks here, but I'll get it all. Over to you guys before then, so you can have it ready. I'll write the public hearing notice and everything, so. That's really all you have to do and just, let's take a little bit of time tonight to just kind of take a look at the licensing ordinance if that's okay. And then if, if you like that, then I'll send it to Tim. Well, Tim already has it because he's already reviewed and says, yeah, he likes it. So we'll have him tweak it if we see anything in here. Well, we have to tweak it anyways because, like I said, there's some repeat. You know, there's like the, like the, the lighting and the, you know, the odor and the signage and stuff. That's all in your zoning amendment. So I'll take it out of the licensing ordinance before I send it back to Tim. So basically, I guess, I'm just looking what we would need, over, over on the licensing ordinance, you'll see. That there's some, if you're looking at a color copy, you'll see there's some text in blue. So that is actually, those are actually the recommendations that Eric Foster that made the presentation at the township, like last month, I think it was. Those were his recommendations and, and they looked pretty good. So both Tim has, Tim Golden has looked at it and city attorney also looked at it and said, yeah. Those recommendations for, for, for what Eric Foster was. Putting in there, tho- tho- those we're gonna leave in. So. Let's see, the number of facilities, I think, I think you guys are at unlimited. Do you agree with the prohibiting the consumption centers? Event organizers and temporary event licenses? Do you agree with prohibiting those? That's what I would do.
Yeah, for now I would. Somebody else does it and then we can see what they're doing. In Ann Arbor, I mean, Ann Arbor's gotta have those.
Probably.
Denise? Which one of these, what of the licensees of the five or ten or seven or whatever there is, actually does the township get money from?
So from the provisioning centers, retailers, and I think also the micro businesses, anything that's retail sales. That's where you get that piece of revenue sharing.
But we get nothing from the growers and those other ones.
Right, other than your licensing fee. I mean, you can still charge that licensing fee annually. But the, the revenue sharing, the, you know, whatever it was last year, what twenty-six thousand or something? Or something around there, twenty-six thousand per establishment, that's for any, any type of sales establishment. So you get that plus for the sales, you get the licensing fee also, but just the licensing fees for those other types of facilities. I'm trying to think if there's anything really to point out. This is a long document, so obviously I don't want to go through it, you know, line, line by line. So the, the one I'm gonna tweak is. I'm gonna tweak, I think it's on page nine.
So this is, this will be the licensing, this is just our zoning?
Yeah, so the licensing, like I said, you guys don't have anything to do with that. So basically, just, you know, I'm just, I, I. We sent it just so you, if there's something in there that jumps out at you, you know, that's why I wanted you guys to have it. We don't have to do a line by line review of it. It's been, like I said, it's been in effect, it's been tested, it's being revised, it's been revised. We don't have to do a line-by-line review of it. It's been, like I said, it's been in effect, it's been tested, it's being revised, it's been revised you know, by the city in their process, after some learning, you know, on what works and what doesn't. We went in and, you know, like, for example, the, um, like, how does a, how does an applicant appeal a decision? Let's say it gets turned down. How do they appeal it? You know, how long do they have to appeal it? Um, you know, how long do they, how long does the community have after they put in even the, the initial application? How long do you have to tell them their application is complete? How long do they have, you know, to review? How long does the community have to review it? So those things are all in there now. Um, then there, you know, you, you, because there's gonna be two processes going on. When they come in to apply, there's the zoning side of it, which they're, you know, the site plan and stuff's gonna come to you. There's a licensing side of it to make sure that they're complying with the licensing ordinance. So, you know, there's kinda two things happening, and there's the building, and then Don gets it, right? And for the building, you know, if they're gonna build something, then it goes. Cuz Don, you're gonna be here forever, right? So it's gonna go to Don.
Okay, it's gonna be our, gonna be our train marijuana guy.
We're gonna put wheels on his chair.
I, I, I told Don, like, was it last year or something, when he said he was gonna retire, and I laughed, and I said, yeah, right? I was right. Anyway, so, um, so there's a whole, you know, and, and the city has it written out, step by step, how that process works. And you'll need something like that for applicants that says, this is how it works in the township. These are the steps to go through. This is the order it goes through. This is the, the, the timing for how long, you know, it takes. Um, so that's all, you know, as this, as the amending ordinance and as the licensing ordinance are going through the adoption process, we can get, be getting those other materials ready for when it goes into effect. You want your application, and you want your steps of adoption all ready to go. So that when, you know, it hits, if somebody wants to apply, it's all up there on your website already. So I can work on that, you know, in, in January, cuz it's probably not, it won't, won't go to township board till February anyways, cuz you, cuz you guys have the thirty days in there, it's gotta go to the county. So the township board can't get even the licensing ordinance till at least February, maybe March, depending on, we'll see, depending on how, what the dates, how the dates work out, I don't know. You know, in terms of having your public hearing and then going to the county in that thirty-day time period, so. Um, anyways, I don't know. Is there anything that jumps out at you? Have you had a chance to scan through this licensing ordinance?
I read through it, um, Denise, and, and the only thing I was, I kept circling city and
Oh, well, yeah.
But, um, I guess I didn't read the instructions on what I was actually reading. But the one question I had on page seventeen of it, under prohibited acts, it says no person under the age of eighteen. Isn't it twenty-one? Or is that up to the business to do twenty-one?
I thought it was eighteen.
I thought it was twenty-one.
Well, let's.
I did too, for recreational?
For recreational, yes.
I read that someplace.
And maybe in my.
Right, yeah, I thought it was twenty-one.
Yeah, well, let's, let's see here.
So your next regular meeting would be January tenth, if that's gonna be our public.
Oh, permitted in a facility?
Correct. I thought it was twenty-one over only.
Or to buy, is that twenty-one?
And that I don't know. I guess I don't know the difference. Why would an eighteen-year-old?
I'll double, I'll double check.
Okay.
Up in the, let me make a note here.
That was the only spot I remembered even seeing anything in regard to age, because the rest of it would be, of course.
I, I know that when, when, like in the, when we did the, when, well, actually wasn't me that wrote that, the, the not your attorney, but another attorney wrote the primary caregiver language, you know, some, some years ago. I remember there's some, some language in there about not being allowed in the facility unless you're eighteen.
And maybe that's what it is, that the caregivers only have to be eighteen, that's, that is the truth. So that would make sense, I guess.
I'll read through the, both of those acts.
And then I guess my thing is, is that if we need to, if, if the licensing ordinance needs to have both, you know, for a caregiver in medical and, or all three maybe even.
Well, the licensing, the caregivers wouldn't be in the licensing, because that's not something that the local communities can license. So you have it in your zoning, because you've got some standards in there, which you're allowed to do. You don't have a lot of standards. It's mainly a standard to prohibit combined care facilities, caregiver facilities. That's really the point of the language that's in your ordinance right now, because primary caregivers are still a thing. Matter of fact, there's some legislation that's going through, so, um, no, the primary caregivers would not be addressed by any of this.
Okay, okay.
Just the two.
But wouldn't a caregiver be a medical, be able to use their medical card to go into the facility and make a purchase?
Um, I would think so, yeah, but, but, but it's, you know, that's just a customer at that point.
Right, I guess I'm going back to in regards to the language. Maybe only eighteen is what needs to be in there, because a caregiver could be eighteen to go inside a building and make a purchase.
I wanna double-check that, though.
Okay.
So, yep.
Thank you. So I've next, are, it could potentially be January tenth, is what you're saying, Tom?
If we don't have any cases, I don't know how many, I don't know how many days, uh, notice we need to advertise this.
You need fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. Nominee for a case.
Say that again?
For a case, I wonder if we, uh, can we have a public hearing in the case the same day? Okay.
Uh, you mean just another case that might come in?
Yeah, if one came in.
Yep.
I don't see any big ones coming in. Do you, you see, do you know of any coming in? No, I don't, okay. Yeah, we'll probably shoot for the tenth.
January tenth? Okay, so that'll, you know, we'll, we'll get it. I'll, like I said, I'll get it, I'll get the public hearing notice, you know, ready and sent to the township along with um, while I, I'll revise this one, you know, you guys have to get it posted and, um. And then in the meantime, the attorney can be tweaking this.
So what are we doing?
Yeah.
I'm just asking, are we rushing this bus at all?
I don't know.
Uh, no, I don't think we're rushing it at all.
We've been kind of.
It's been going on for three years. I mean, for me, it's not been, but we need to.
We just got.
We're gonna miss about, I think, if we don't get our feet on the gas.
I mean, if you don't, if, if you don't, if you're against it, then, you know, there has to be some kind of a vote to push this forward on this board. And I don't think we had that yet.
No, we haven't.
So, so far, it's been all discussion.
So we didn't really, uh.
What's the public hearing for? It's for these two ordinances?
No, just the one. It would just be for the zoning amendment. So I mean, you could, you could vote right now whether to move forward with a public hearing.
Well, that's my point, like, to, to Norm's point. The vote should be tonight, uh, if you're going to have a public hearing on the tenth in regards to the zoning ordinance on the, on the marijuana. Otherwise, you'd have to wait and have another discussion.
And I think if I may speak to that, is that I've had a lot of input, okay? And one of the big problems is, especially from the people, and Don is probably aware of this, some of this, is that after the last meeting that the city had, uh, with the public hearing and the votes with the special meeting with the planning and so on, there was a lot of input. A lot of questions that was, that I answered, is that why have we not had a public hearing like the city did? And what I keep coming out, whether it's whatever, and we're working on it, these are public meetings that can come to whatever, but it's, it's like, uh, I've got four letters. And I've had conversations with a lot of folks. They want input here, but they just feel that we're not asking for input, that this is all being done. And, and I try to assure everybody that you come and sit here and do what you want, uh, say what you want, uh. You can, right, but I think we need to have a public hearing soon. Uh, where we have the ability to bring people in and hear what they've got to say, because there's a hell of a lot more to this, in my opinion, the input that I'm getting, other than the funds and damned if you do and damned if you don't get more money, uh, and we're gonna miss the boat. Somebody would say, what boat are we gonna miss? And is that boat worth the trip? And there's a lot of, there's a lot out there. I've talked with Hunt. I've talked with a lot of folks that are involved in the school system, if you will, that have had conversations. And I think we need a public meeting, and I think we need to vote on it, and so we can get some people in here and, and hear the other side, but that's my.
So, okay, so are you saying then, that on the tenth, we would have this document? The marijuana document that's been revamped, and to all the things that we've discussed tonight, to then have a public hearing to get in, more input from the public before we then recommend it one way or the other to the board?
That's what I would suggest. We've gotta have a document that we have a position that we need to either, you know, pro or con, whichever way the public, but I think we need a document. At this point, we don't have a document. We have a public hearing. Uh, and just take input and say, do you want or not? I think we need a document, and that document needs to be um, out to the public, and I think that we need to take that input and then take that document, that there's radical changes or changes that we need to make, then we make the final document, and then we vote.
Well, okay, there's two ways to go at this, then, Chuck. You have the document that we've got in place right now, which we've all tweaked tonight. Then that you can give to a public hearing where people get to put input into that. Or tonight, we say that we accept this amendment, or this, this, this document, the way it is that we've talked about it tonight. And that we are voting as a planning commission to send that forward with a public hearing where people then get to come in and talk about it. But that would be the document if it's going, no matter what. We can revert, we can revise, we can do what we want when the public comes in. But it will be a document that's coming from us to the board as the document that's going to legalize marijuana.
Yeah, and I thought, well, it's a sense of public hearing, then, if we're not gonna make any changes.
You would make changes.
You can.
Make changes. That's the whole point of the public hearing. But my point is, either the board is going to want this or not want it. If you don't really want it, as a board, to send it on to the planning board, then there's no point in going forward.
Well, I think that's, that's what our home workshops have been about, is to move it forward.
Okay.
But I think that we need to have a cross-section of approval from the, uh, from the constituents out there about the plan we're taking forward.
Okay, but, does, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You guys?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. Because, well, I'm not saying, I, I know you do, but, like, so which way do you wanna go? Do you want this to be our recommendation to the board with public hearing input? Or we're just gonna let the public come in and talk about it, then we'll talk about it again and send it out to the board? Is both ways worse?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I just, my only concern is, is that a year from now, two years from now, is that I would like to have the constituents, those folks in our community out there know that we give it the best, uh, that we could. We took the input, we looked at, at the decisions that we made. And, uh, we did the best we could under our circumstances.
Well, let me ask you this. Let's say you get twenty people out there that say they adamantly do not want this. Would that be then, what we would perceive as to not send it forward to the board?
Not really, but what we would do is, our question, my question would be is, why, why don't you want it? What can we do to make this more acceptable to our culture and our community? That's my concern, is, is that, is that we have enough of the folks out there that want to benefit from us allowing and taking the money, uh, what we're gonna do with that money, and whether it's gonna go into special projects, uh, so that we can, if somebody says, so you're gonna get lots of money. And that's what it's about, so we get lots of money in. What are you gonna do with that money? We need to have an answer for that, I think. Are we gonna put it to special projects that have nothing to do with?
That's up to the board.
I understand that, I understand that, but the people out there look at us and say, what is your thought when, when we're going to, and one of the reasons we wanna pass this is what? Financial. One of the things is, is that we're damned if we do and damned if we don't, because we need the money it's gonna generate. And if it's, it's generated in some other township or county kinda thing, why shouldn't it be then generated here? So we can take, as I was told from the Salvation Army and from some of the folks that have been calling and talking with me, is that uh, you know, if we don't do it, and we don't get the money, then you're gonna have to take a look at, uh, millage or raise some taxes or something out there to raise money to take care of the problems that this thing generates. Now, if we let another township or another county do it and we don't do it, we're gonna have to raise funds, because they're gonna get the marijuana some other way. And an, an interesting thing that I, I had about five or six different people that talked to me about this was, is that, uh, the black market. And I've heard that comment, the black market is gonna go away, or partially go away, when this happens, because there's not a need for conversations that I've had, and the, and the, and the documents, two documents that I looked at expressed the fact that the black market increased, okay? And that's, that's a fact. A legal fact that's in document, and that it increases. So, you know, there's so much out there. Um, and, and my feeling right now is we're damned if we do and damned if we don't. I just wanna know that, you know, get some more information. I don't know about the city, but I thought I read in there that the city, Don could probably answer that, or you folks that have read more than I have, is that the city is is not ready to, or is not going to, um, okay, the, uh, adult consumption establishments or facilities. Is that true, Don? I, that's.
Yeah. What they're talking about right now, I would say that's a true statement. And, and going back to your first point, Chuck, about the public hearing. You know, I've been involved at the city since, I don't know, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, whenever these laws. And all we've been doing is talking and talking, then we got medical. Right away, they took a look at recreational. The bottom line is, the people in the state of Michigan, the people in Alpena County, it wasn't a super majority, but overwhelmingly voted to have this in, in their communities. And then it becomes up to us, how do we fit it in? So the best way to get their opinions, I mean, how, how many people are at your meeting right now? This is what the second or third one, fourth one you had. Nobody shows up. Once it's in the paper and it's a public hearing, because the planning commission is gonna send something to the board, that's when people are gonna come and give their input. And you can have, you can have a meeting after that, based on their endpoint, you can tweak it after that, but you gotta get it started at some point in time.
That's exactly right. And I'm not saying, don't get it started. All I'm saying.
Right.
And, and the comments, Don, and I'm sure you've heard some of this.
Yeah.
The, the comments that are that I think that what the people are wanting is a public hearing, that there's a piece in the paper says, not a little thing in the message, you know, Alpena Township and this kinda thing. I think there needs to be something in the paper, say, Alpena Township holds a public hearing on the, uh, marijuana ordinances. And, and, and I think that, that's what has to be done, because right now, uh, you know, I, the letter that I just got from the, the, um, Area Association of Ministerial whatever kinda thing, uh, and the Salvation Army and those folks are asking to come to a public hearing uh, like they did at the city, and, um, you know, it, it's interesting that they're saying, hey, when are you guys gonna have a public hearing? And I said, well, every one of the, every one of the, the meetings are public, come on in and say what you wanna say. And then when we went back and we had talked to Nathan, and at least I did, and I think there's a board again. Um, you know, let's go out and let's find somebody from Hunt, let's find somebody from State Place, let's find somebody from the school system. Let's find. Let's find, uh, you know, these folks and, and ask them to come in. But all we ever had is, and this has been thrown back at me, is all we've ever had. Is people that are lawyers, which the legal side of it we need. There's no question about that. And it's the money side of it. There's, there's nobody that's come in and talked about the adverse effects. The situations that whether we do or we don't, what's gonna happen out here to. And it's just like, and something I didn't know is that when you go to the homeless situation down to the mission. You walk in and if you don't pass the drug test, you're out the door. And then you've got to go find, somebody's gotta come up with money to take care of those people that can't stay at the mission. So that kinda falls on. Uh, situation where we need some funds to cover those things if we're gonna do it as an entity. Uh, you know, that's all I'm concerned about is, is that we get a good cross-section and I don't think we've had that. I think that we've talked, uh, legal, we've talked about money, we've talked about everything, but there's been nobody out here. Because maybe they don't know, they've not been invited or.
That's it. They, they don't know. So, this is what I would suggest. You know, put a regular public hearing notice in the paper at the same time issue a press release. Okay, so try to get, you know, maybe even some front page, you know, or, or. Not in the, you know, the section where the public notices. We'll put one there too, because some people look at that too. But actually, let's try and get a story done, you know, and, and, and call it, you know, it's a public input session. Not just a public hearing, it's a public input session.
Yeah, so would we do that? Okay, so how, but how do you recommend that? Do we at this point take what we have amended? And say, we as a board are accepting this. And now we wanna have a public hearing on it and we want public input.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and then, so we would advertise it as a public hearing, but also call it a public input session. Let the public know this is not the final, you know, this is your opportunity to come in. There will likely be, you know, there, there won't probably be a decision made at that public session. Because you wanna be able to digest what they've come in and said. Okay, so then, you know, let's say that the overwhelming majority says. Yeah, we wanna move forward, but we want some more restrictions. We don't want it allowed in all the districts that you're suggesting, you that you're proposing right now. So that's a major change. So you would go back and make that change, then you hold another public hearing for where, you know, when you have it in its final, final form. So, but I think public input, you know, advertise it as that through a press release in the paper and also. Um, you know, put it up on the township website, prop page that you're having this input session. It's not just a formal. You know, humdrum public hearing. It's, let's actually get some input where people come.
Yeah, and, and maybe I've got a, because in my career, in my life. We used to hold public hearings, public input, where in the hell we're gonna put telephone poles? You know, I mean, I, I'm a, I'm a public input guy kinda thing and my career was involved with. You know, if we're gonna put up a, a neat, a little, uh, uh, repeater site. We would hold a public hearing and people would come in, would hold the Chamber of Commerce. We would hold and people come in and you get a cross-section. The majority of the people want that building there. But it's nice to be able to sit there and. Get other inputs that can think out, get you thinking outside the box. That might improve the, the total thing, whether that or whatever, my, that's my thought, so.
So I'm just gonna put in my, um.
One quick thing.
Write down all these thoughts, which is.
One quick. Don, you remember ordinance was at one forty-one that we passed and we had, uh, half the township in this building?
One thirty-five.
One thirty-five.
One thirty-five.
And I think what we need is this, uh, document to be come to. A point of where we think it's somewhat finalized to bring to the people. They need to be able to pick up this document and look at it, check it over for at least a couple of weeks.
Yep.
And then we gotta keep advertising that this is when the public hearing is gonna be.
But that's the whole point. So we are actually saying the ordinance is done now. And we're gonna put it in a public hearing. Where, where people come in and can ta- talk about it and we can then still tweak it.
That's what I'm saying. I think a tenth is too soon. We gotta get this, um, done. We also need to get.
It is done. We just did it. What more would you do?
Yeah, but you got, you got these holidays and everything coming.
I know, but it, you think you want, well, you can change a public hearing. It doesn't have to be a, a, a meeting day. It can be.
Correct. I'm just saying, give, whatever it is, give those folks out there an opportunity to have this document in their hand. Massage it, play with it, tear it, whatever they wanna do. So when they come to the meeting, they got this thing in their hand and we don't like this, you can't do that. We're gonna listen to all their stuff.
So, I would say the tenth is too early then for a public hearing. Like this document is gonna go to Denise now. She's gonna do what we just said to do. And then done. That's our recommendation to the board in a sense. But the public hearing is the public's chance to tweak what we think. Right? So this document is the document. From our board to go forward to like to have medical marijuana in this township. If the Board of Trustees votes for it.
But we're saying we recommend this document to the board that we take on.
Well, you're not, you're not saying that yet. No. You're saying, let's use this document and let's get res- public response to this document and then we'll decide if we wanna recommend it to the board.
Okay, I'll buy that.
All right. You, I just wanna get this clear. This document is gonna be out there floating around.
And it should be.
Is what we are recommending. I mean, I'm, I'm not against it, so I'm happy to do that. I just wanna, I think if you're gonna do that and you want it to be for sure you get as many people as possible.
Absolutely.
Then, um, you don't put it on January tenth then. You should change the public hearing to maybe the twenty.
I think that's too soon for the public hearing. That's only my opinion.
Mine too. I think we could get a little shot after a couple, you know. And we all have contacts. We could maybe get something on the TV, um. Kinda thing, uh, we could get it in the paper, um.
That would give some time to get the licensing ordinance tweaked too and they can, they can have both of those documents. To look at instead of just the zoning side of it.
Yeah, okay. I agree with that.
But one thirty-five wasn't pretty. It was ugly.
Yeah, but sometimes ugly is pretty, you know.
Well, but, I'm, what I'm saying, we don't wanna go through that again. At least when the people come in, they're gonna be able to voice their opinions. And nothing's happened. It's, they got the potential of happening.
The secret, in my opinion again, is my experience is, is that exactly what, what, uh. Uh, we're talking about is getting that document out there because what happened that night when they walked in here. When we had a, it was a big surprise to just about everybody what that document was, in my opinion. Is that that's why you had so many upset people.
Yep.
You know, that's why our real estate lady was really upset because she had no idea what was in it. That's what she told me after. And I think so, your idea, get it out there, get it that they can look at it, see, uh, what it's about and.
Cause it was affecting her bottom line.
Yeah, exactly. That's why she showed up.
And, and that's exactly what's going on here because three quarters of the conversation is affecting bottom lines. That's part of the.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to be on, I'm not voting for money on this one. For me, this is, it was voted by the state. The people of Michigan said they want it. And it's our job as a planning commission to write it, to write it. It's up to the Board of Trustees to decide whether they think it's right for the township or not.
But we need the input by the people because our township voted it down.
I absolutely, well, the state of Michigan is not this township.
I understand, but that, we have the option to do it in this township or not do it.
If, okay, that's not fair though. When people vote, they assume that that's right for everybody in Michigan, not just specific spots.
But the state allowed us to do that. Say whether in or out.
The state's gonna be taking this over when they see money. It's not, they're just doing this because the federal government is involved yet, so. You know.
I, I agree with all them things, but I'm just throwing them back out there.
Okay, so then it will continue to with public notices anyway, cause it still goes to the Board of Trustees. That will be another public hearing too, on top of it, besides the one that's gonna be here.
Any comments Denise?
That's a good point. Maybe you can get both then.
Yeah, I think that's, I think this is a good way to do it because. You know, like you, like you've said, I mean, the, the, in short, the criticism of that other ordinance was that. The public really didn't see it before it got voted on.
Right.
They found out about it after the fact. That's, then we don't wanna do that this time. Give them plenty of opportunity, if, even if it means you gotta hold a second one, is fine.
Oh yeah, I agree. The more, the more open you are, the more.
But they're complaining to Chuck, but there's nobody in the stands.
Well, that's not, that's.
Yeah, but that's, that's.
But that's exactly what we're looking for.
I hear this at other board meetings that we've snuck policies. We've approved policies in, in the dark of night and stuck them into the. If this is in the schools, we've snuck them into the, uh, uh, into our, uh, rules, our policies. When nobody had a chance to, we had first reading, second reading, third reading, nobody cared. All of a sudden, now they care.
Our township board does that all the time.
But it's open meetings. We got, we have open meetings, nobody comes. Now, they, now they might go, well, tell them to come.
This might be different. If you advertise this differently.
So if they think.
I will say.
But that's fine. I don't, I don't.
This is a difference, it's a hot button, but I do think, I've been in zoning a long time and. People never show up unless it's following them personally.
And that's just it. All we're gonna get is dissent.
Not necessarily.
You don't think so?
We had a public meeting. We had a public hearing when there, or meeting when the first, when the, uh, law first, first passed. But it was such a crappy law that written that we didn't go forward, but nobody, the only, the, only the four showed up. Nobody against.
Everybody was.
Somebody told me, well, you'll make the right decision. That's what somebody told me about it later on. I'll make the right decision. Well, what is the right decision? The right decision obviously was to allow, allow those licenses because. You didn't have the ambition to show up at the meeting and.
Yeah, but the point.
Guess who is showing up? No, who, who is showing up to these meetings though?
But the point of it is.
Those that are involved with the industry.
Yeah, well, they are.
They are showing.
Well, other people probably don't realize what we're doing here. There's nothing in the paper about it.
They seem to know all about it. Do you know what I mean? They have, because they are interested. They are interested. The other people are not showing an interest because it's not. It's not on their, um, horizon, their agenda right now.
Well, it's not, I haven't seen anything on the paper about what we're doing at this.
But I, I agree with you. I am not against this. I think that the more open you are.
Absolutely.
As a government, the better off you are.
Transplant.
Trying to get people in here.
And just another point too is that, you know, we also have the county planning and zoning, okay? And a little was mentioned that maybe there would have to be a public hearing, uh, by the county planning and zoning. And I don't think we wanna go there because now they're involved. This is our township, our community and our responsibility. I think we should give them an opportunity to, to come and say it, and if they don't, we've done our, our due diligence. As far as I'm concerned, that's, we're offering it, if they don't come. But if they come and then, and somewhere a crazy good idea comes out of it, then, then more.
Hey, the city, they had both.
They've been messing around with this for.
They had what?
They had a huge public hearing on their, um, marijuana ordinance.
Well, I was at that one. And, and the thing of it is, I think there was. There wasn't that many folks there. Yeah, but there's not a lot of seating. All there was is seating around the back.
So, how fair is that?
You.
Yeah, we shut the doors.
Reason I bring up this, like, one thirty-five.
All right, so we're gonna, so do we have to have a vote or is it just, do we just, what do we do on that? Moving this forward, your changes on the ordinances.
We get the changes, Don.
Then, what, should we pick a date for a public hearing right now? So, or how do you want?
Oh, uh, we'll have to like the link tomorrow, cause we don't want it on tenth, that's too soon, so.
Okay, so I'm not gonna write anything in the minutes then, because I gotta have a date.
You can write date to be determined.
Are we, we're not pushing this document forward then? We're just, what are we doing?
Yes, we are, we're pushing the document forward.
So, you're voting on whether, you're voting on holding some public input?
Yeah, so we, we've already kinda made the motion a few different ways, I think, but.
So I just wanna write this down in the minutes. The planning commission. What do you wanna say? Is. Considering.
Moving forward, Wes.
To move forward. The marijuana ordinance and licensing.
By the way, I have an answer on the eighteen or twenty-one years old.
Oh, good. What'd you find out?
It's both. It's, it's twenty-one for adult use and it's eighteen for medical.
Okay, okay, well, there we go.
So I'll change that.
Yeah. The public hearing to be determined.
Date to be determined.
Okay, so I've got the planning commission, the planning commission is considering to move forward the marijuana ordinance and licensing ordinance to have. The public hearing to be determined.
Date to be determined. I don't think we need the word, we should have the word consider, cause we're not considering it. We're moving forward with the, the proper language to present.
Is moving forward. Forward with the. Marijuana ordinance and licensing ordinance to have a public hearing.
Date to be determined. And maybe, maybe specify it to be determined in January twenty twenty-two.
Okay, public hearing date to be determined for January. Twenty twenty-two. I don't know if that, if we can do that. Can we do that legally? Because then we don't know when that is. Until we're voting on something that's futuristic.
Well, we don't. I mean, we can't. We're not doing the tenth. We don't have.
So, but, but, but the thing is, it's like. Public hearing is important.
Faith, crop value tiers, they're not gonna reduce the homicide rate, but really, it'll be.
So much. If I could suggest something, maybe, maybe the, maybe the planning commission moves it forward to the township board. For public input session and then they can determine when to have the public hearing. But then, then the clerk can get it on an agenda for a full board meeting when the people show up.
But I don't think that this board is comfortable giving something to the township, the Board of Trustees yet. That's what I'm getting.
I think we want our own public input to our document before we send it. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, then you'd set it up for your next planning commission meeting.
But then, Norm doesn't think that's.
It's not sufficient time.
With Chris.
Turn to our wins, and that's gonna start in the elections in twenty twenty-two, and that's why I'm running for president again. So I totally convince there's gonna be a massive and I hope constructive backlash against.
If they're gonna review it on day twenty-nine. Fifty-nine and eighty-nine.
Would you be comfortable with us having it at the next planning commission meeting?
To the vital issues or put it all together.
I think they are. Anything at that point, we're just trying to get input.
I think the absolute here are connected and it's a political ideology.
Cause you're gonna have a huge public hearing with trustees.
It's not based on logic. It's not based on facts. It's not based on looking at crime.
But I think we need to get a feeling before.
To Don Bill, it's a yes or no. Of course, it's still part of the conception.
No, we wouldn't have, no, we could just be a public hearing and.
No, 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 no. That's not what I said.
Yeah. You're gonna have a huge public hearing at the trustees when this comes up. Because you determine whether this becomes law or not. We don't.
Correct.
So, my personal belief is if we showed it January tenth, we had input. From whoever shows up on that meeting. It would then go forward to you guys and that's where I would make the real push for the public. Is at your level, because you're the one that makes the determination of whether it becomes law or not, not us. This is our document to you because the Michigan voted for it. And we're letting, we're saying to our, our township as a planning commission. Okay, well, if the board thinks that they wanna move forward with legalizing that in our township. the planning commission has drawn up with our consultant this document for you to look at to determine if that's what you wanna do. So the public hearing for me is more at your level than it is ours almost. Cause I'm not gonna tweak it a whole lot. Well, I think the licensing is straight from the state. Straight from the state, pretty much. That's, we're not tweaking that. This other is just us determining where we, we, if we, if you wanted to consider it legally, it would determine where we would put it if we did it. That's from us. That I don't think is gonna change much. The 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 public is really gonna go after you guys, because you determine whether it becomes law.
Only, only thing I'm saying is get it out there so they got it in their hands for a couple of weeks. I don't care when you do it, how you do it, but they gotta have this document.
I agree. But I think.
Is it the tenth? I don't know. I'm thinking the holidays. I think that's a little quick.
I I think it's on how you advertise it. So I, January tenth, if they put it out there on the front page, you know, January third, that we'll have a big meeting on this on the tenth, and our normal date of having our normal meetings, uh discussion will be had by, you know.
The board has to do that. But this, this, this board has no authority to spend any money or put any advertising.
So why are we, so why don't we just put it there right in the meeting room? And then have discussion, and then you guys put all the effort into the public hearings to determine, you know. If you wanna have a couple of public hearings, go ahead. We're just pushing the document forward for you to decide if you wanna do it or not.
Whatever you wanna do.
Well, I'm just saying, if if you have public come in here on this document, I don't know what they're gonna add to it to change it for us to send it forward. The whole point is to whether you wanna do it or not, if you think it's something that's detrimental, that's more of a different issue than changing the document than its verbiage. You see what I'm saying? Like, if Hawk came in and had a discussion, it wouldn't be over, well, you probably shouldn't use that area for commercial. It wouldn't be about that. It'd be what it does to kids and why you shouldn't ask the order. Something like that.
So you get the document in their hands a couple of weeks at a time, right? When you do it, how you do it, right? So they can't.
Why can't we just have it on January tenth?
But what would we be having?
We'd be having this document at a public hearing on the tenth of January. Then it goes to the board, and then they have their.
But didn't you just say that the board is the one that should be in charge of the public hearing?
Well.
One is a planning commission. We have.
You have to.
Yes.
It's legal. It's a legal thing that we have to do. We don't have to have two or three. We only need to have one. And I'm saying, let's just have it at our normal meeting. They can then go ahead and do whatever.
And then we can, but we could present as amended for them to give to the public.
There were any, if the, there were people in this.
The board can change anything, uh because it's not even.
So from a logistics standpoint, we hold a meeting on January tenth. We say, we're gonna talk about the zoning ordinance that we're writing. We can, I mean.
Done. It's been written.
Done, so.
So this is what we're gonna do. What is your discussion? People are gonna come in wanting to see it. This is in case we don't make it available before January tenth. If we're gonna come in wanting to see it, we are going to review it with them, then maybe at that point, we give them a opportunity to get a copy of it. And then the board will then promote their public hearing, right?
Well, copy should be on the um link, should be linked in. You, you, people should be able to get documents.
Yeah, that will legally, they have to have.
They have to have that.
Yeah.
So once this goes in the papers, a public hearing, they, that should show where you can pick up this ordinance.
Okay.
Read it.
I'm just asking questions.
I think it will go faster if we do it January tenth, so that it actually gets to the real none of it, which is the Board of Trustees. Um, they can be tweaked anytime after that too. It's that, this is just our recommendation to the board. That's all we.
That's all it is.
And then the board can tweak it, send it back, have two or three hearing, they can do whatever they want, but this is our best document to the board.
So let me make sure, I just wanna make sure I have everything that you're doing, okay? Cause there's been a lot of different ways here. So, okay. So you are, we're gonna do the regular public hearing notice like we always do with an amendment. Fifteen days ahead of the meeting, you're gonna hold a meeting January tenth. Of course, that document is gonna be available on the township website the day that that or before that that public hearing notice comes out of the paper. You're still gonna go through the irregular process. You remember, you've got thirty days. You're gonna send it to the county before it goes to the board. Maybe while it's at the county, that's why you, that's where you're doing your big press release and your push at getting that, you know, really getting that information out there and letting them know that the township board's gonna be getting this ordinance on whatever date we figure out that that is. And then they're help, they're holding a second, because they have the ability to hold as many, you know, as many public hearings as they want. So, so is that the order? We're gonna do it like a regular amendment. You're gonna recommend it, goes to the county. Then during that thirty-day period is when we really push it out for.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. And that's the Board of Trustees. So if we do it on the tenth of January, the first push, they have, there will be fifteen days there, because they have to have fifteen days before we, that, you know, it has to be published fifteen days before January tenth. That's gotta come soon. So it will be in the paper for this board. And then it's gonna go through a bunch of other things. So if people don't, they're gonna show up at the Board of Trustees. And I, hopefully they show up here, to be honest with you.
Just so they have access.
They do. They have to have access. It's it's illegal not to. And you have to post where they can get it. So how other, how are there many ways could you post where you could pick up this document? If you wanted to make it more than just going on the internet and getting it off there? That they could pick one up.
The township could do a press release. I mean, have you read the Elpina News lately? Again, they've got this base to, they'll probably wanna write a feature.
Yeah, nobody gets it.
Yeah, I'm not anymore.
So should I then just say that? That's why I think we have to have a date. I I can't just say it out there for whenever.
Well, and that's what we're saying, January tenth.
So that's why I was trying to get back to that point.
Got it.
Do it that way. So, okay, the planning commission is moving forward with the marijuana ordinance and the licensing ordinance to have a public hearing to be held on January tenth. So that moves this along.
You're in government. No, you're not in the industry.
What, what is it that you're missing? You're not gonna, because we have to take a vote on.
My time. But let's, yeah, let's take a vote on. I'm I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I'm good with it. It's just.
So that's a motion, but I'm saying, does anybody wanna make that?
So you made that motion?
I'm not, I'm writing it out, so I'm saying.
I'll make that motion.
So the motion.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Or if that motion says what we're doing. So the city is not gonna do recreational, uh, Don?
I'm, I'm sure they will eventually. They're still into, they're doing the same thing you're doing.
Okay.
They're just waiting to get council on board.
To get what on board?
The city council.
Okay.
You know, and there's, they know they've got a majority, then they'll, you know, they feel comfortable, then the mayor will ask or the city manager will push it forward.
I thought they had a majority, but.
Yeah, I thought they had that at the last meeting. I guess it was just medical.
Well, medical, our medical is done. The only difference in medical, they just increased it from two licenses to unlimited here and where other, what other places, and and then included the rest of the licenses too. But they'll, uh, I I mean, I hopefully it'll run a concurrent course with you guys. In in my opinion, it's always best if the city and township move forward together. And if their rules are very similar, so that it's less confusing to business people, whether they're from out of town or local people that wanna be entrepreneurs and start a new business. It just always seemed to make sense to me that the city and the, and the township were on board together, because it's, the whole city limits thing is kind of an invisible barrier between us. Nobody knows when they cross over, so.
Yeah.
Having enforced these kinda rules for the last two decades, it's always easier, the more similar they are.
I think it's getting better.
Yeah, I do too.
All the building's gonna be in our contract.
Unless they want water.
Oh, boy. Here we go.
What are we gonna do about getting the information out there?
I don't know. I don't know what to do.
Somebody can contact the news. I will contact the news and see.
That Skibby is our contact person for the media.
All right.
When she tell that time, they have to get on it, because they have to have fifteen days notice in the papers if we're using your public hearing. So he has to do it immediately. If you have that properly done.
Yeah, but it's got to be more than noticed, don't you think?
Yes, I mean, it.
Somebody's gotta talk to him about doing a small article about.
Well, that's, that's Tom's job. He's the chairman of the board here. You need to tell Nathan Skibby that we want more than just a little blip in the paper for our public. So somehow you guys enter the discussions, who would you contact to make it a little bit more than that? I, I mean, we could throw it out there, but the paper obviously is one. You put it on your, the the boards um on our site, and then where else would be good things to?
Yeah, I guess. But I don't see the, uh, this document, I don't see the uh people coming in here and say, well, you should change this and this and this about this document. They're either gonna say, yes, you wanna do it, no, we don't.
Right.
So that's, that's what our, it's not gonna work. Our decisions be, do we wanna push this? Or don't we? Yeah, I mean, they're, they're oh, they might tweet, you know, they might say, well, don't.
I think you have to decide on whether.
Think it's gonna be, it's, do you wanna do it or don't you wanna do it? And that's why if that's, cause township board has to do that.
Well, don't we have to do that anyway?
What?
Don't we have to have that for a public hearing anyway too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As there, I mean, in the history of being on this, this board, for many of you, have you had somebody come in here and ask that we change the ordinance before we present it to the trust, the board?
Not change it per se.
Yeah, we've changed your.
Oh, yeah.
Had public hearings.
But it's not this type of thing. This is more of a moralistic kind of thing.
And we are a zoning commission. We are not the moral police or the actual police.
This is about the land, not the morals of trying to keep somebody healthy.
We had a public hearing tonight.
We did?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, for that, uh, that small house, that was.
Oh, yeah, all kinds of people showed up. I mean, I've only been on the, on this for six months.
But they are specifically to the land.
Correct.
They were to the land and also.
I'm just curious to know how it's gone.
Is people getting upset with people using their land a certain way?
We were great for everything.
Yeah, and and at least we've got, yes, we've got our.
I agree with you. All this is good. This is about being open and, you know, that kind of.
Can I say one more thing before we unterm? Uh, Donald, maybe you can uh put a point on this. On December twentieth, the the next commissioners meeting, our city council, you're gonna be talking about fluoride?
Uh, city council's talking about fluoride. That's kinda like out of the realm of the building official for now.
Anyway, they're gonna have an open meeting on it, whether they should.
Yeah.
Do away with fluoride because of issues of cost or whatever. Uh, I don't know what your thoughts are on fluoride, but if you have any thoughts on it, I think it'd be a good meeting to attend. If I say if you got your opinions, that'd be a good place to show.
That's where I think. Okay, anything else for the good of cows? Thanks, Don.
Thank you, guys.